I call this October 6th work session to order. First of all, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Is that moved?
Mr. Tool.
Second.
Mr. Hammond, all in favor? Pass is five zero. At this time, we'll have the swearing in ceremony for Dr. Melissa Butler as the superintendent of Oconee County Schools. Dr. Butler, will you step forward? And Judge Hunsinger, would you please step forward and administer the oath?
Dr. Butler. Before you enter the discharge of your duties as superintendent of the Oconee County School System, state law requires that you take the oath of office. I will give you the oath and ask that you swear or affirm to it upon completion. When I say I state your name, I will read the entirety of the oath and then you'll make your affirmation. If you'll raise your right hand. I am Melissa Butler. Oops, you say that, not me. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will not, that I will truly perform the duties of local school superintendent of the Oconee County School System to the best of my ability. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that I will manage the finances of the local school system in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. That I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding. And that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia and the final paragraph, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Georgia. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Harden.
I just, thank you, Mr. Ransom. I wanted to just take a moment and say it's, it's truly been an honor to serve as Oconee County's interim superintendent, and I have appreciated your confidence, so thank you very much. And I want to welcome Dr. Butler, and I want to have a warm welcome for Justin, Natalie, and Luke. You're about to join another family, and that's the Oconee County School family. Dr. Butler, you're stepping into a school system filled with extraordinary educators, principals, and staff who are deeply committed to supporting your vision and the work of the Board of Education. As a former superintendent of this school system, it brings me great joy to see someone of your reputation and stature take the helm. I look forward to assisting you in any way I can during the transition. Since our last meeting, Craig Ellis and most of you were there, was named our district teacher of the year, and we were able to celebrate all 12 teachers at the banquet, and it was an honor for us, and it is an even greater honor to be recognized by your peers. So now we're about some numbers I want to share with you about the district. Our graduation rate for the class of 2025 is 99.7. We were named number one county district for the seventh straight year and the 12th time by NISH, six schools in the top 20, number one county district in Georgia for the 11th straight time and the 13th time overall per school digger. I cannot explain the name. I had 1158 SAT composite, which was number three in the state. There were nine PBIS designations, three Title I distinguished schools, and 16 commended schools by the National Merit Scholarship. Now, those are the numbers, but behind those numbers are the K-12 faculty, staff, and students who made this a reality. And I think we need to recognize their effort because without that, these numbers would not happen. So we're still working to let, changing subjects, ESPLAST. We are still working to make sure that our citizens are informed and aware of the ESPLAST proposals, and the one penny sales tax will be on the ballot in November. I want to commend the staff. We've been working on social media spots. We've met with every school council, faculties, and leadership teams, and I have made information aware to the mayor and councils for the towns in the county. We've met with the GOP. Tomorrow morning, Dr. Butler and Mr. Ransom will meet with Rotary Club, and next week, Ms. Parrish and I will talk with the Democratic Party at the library. Just want to remind everyone that advanced voting will begin October 14th through the 31st, that is next Tuesday, and the general election will be November 4th. So that concludes my report unless you have any questions. The early voting will be at the administrative building, the commissioner's office.
Dr. Harden, we would like to thank you for all the time and hard work and the steady hand on the wheel that you've been the last few months, so we really appreciate the hard work that you've done and glad that you're here for the transition. Thank you. Next, we have presentations and discussions, teaching and learning. Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Harden. I get to follow up on some of the wonderful news that Dr. Harden shared earlier. We have tonight five items of information and no action items. I'm pleased to share that Colom Ferry Elementary, Oconee County Primary School, and Oconee County Elementary have been named 2025 Georgia Title I Distinguished Schools. This honor places them among the top 5% of Title I schools statewide based on a combined ELA and math performance from the 23-24 school year. Congratulations to these leaders, the faculty, students, and families for this outstanding achievement. The second item of information is our district Title III meeting. On September 23rd, Oconee County hosted its annual Title III Parent Night. This event supports and celebrates our multilingual learners and their families. During this event, parents gained a deeper understanding of Title III resources, explored strategies to support children's English language development, and received updates on district resources available to them. Families also had the opportunity to connect with teachers, school administrators, and district staff who worked together to ensure student success. The third item of information are our school improvement visits. During September, the teaching and learning team conducted school improvement visits at all 12 schools. Leaders shared how they developed their school improvement plans, who was involved, and what data informed their work. They discussed key trends, strengths, and areas for growth, aligned professional learning priorities with data, and outlined the use of instructional extension and Title I funds. Schools also reflected on survey results and resulting actions. These visits promoted district-wide alignment, intentional resource use, and a sustained focus on climate, culture, and instructional improvement. The fourth item of information is our 2025 graduation rate. Oconee County Schools achieved a record-high graduation rate of 97.7 for the class of 2025 compared to the state average of 87.2%. This success reflects our district's intentional focus on teaching, learning, and student well-being, as well as our community's commitment to excellence. I would like to take this opportunity to commend our high school principals, their APs and counselors, for their dedication to guiding every student towards success and graduation. And finally, our fifth item of information are our 2025 SAT scores. Oconee County Schools earned a composite SAT score of 1158 for 2025, surpassing the state average of 1029 and national average of 996. This achievement placed Oconee County Schools as number three among Georgia's 165 districts who report data, and the only county school system in Northeast Georgia in the top 30 statewide. North Oconee High ranked number 22, and Oconee County High ranked number 29 among 401 high schools, together leading Northeast Georgia. Congratulations to our students, teachers, and families on this outstanding accomplishment. That concludes the teaching and learning report unless there are any questions. There were some great prizes.
Good evening, Dr. Harden and Board members. The October 2025 Student Services Report contains two items of information and four action items. The first item of information is the school choice timeline for the 26-27 school year. Applications for school choice will open on Friday, November the 14th at 4:00 p.m., and the application window will close Friday, January the 9th, 2026, at 4:00 p.m. Decision letters will be mailed the following week, Friday, January the 16th, 2026. Applications will be accessible through a Google Form link on the main district website as well as on the district's social media accounts. This year, all 12 schools will be available for school choice. As in the previous school year, to simplify the process for families and to assist school personnel with planning for school staff allotments, school choice will be again organized by grade bands, K-5 and then 612. This means families will make one choice for their child's elementary school and one choice for a secondary pathway for middle school through the completion in high school. The second item of information is the annual, is an update on our annual flu vaccine clinics for faculty, staff, and their immediate families. Each year, Oconee County Schools partners with the Oconee County Health Department to provide employees and their immediate families the opportunity to receive the flu vaccine. This year's clinics begin on September the 23rd and will conclude tomorrow. By the end of the clinics, we will have hosted 14 clinic sites across the district in collaboration with the Health Department. As of today, we have had 225 faculty, staff, and family members register to receive the vaccine. Student Services has four action items for tonight's work session. The first action item is an out-of-state field trip for North Oconee High School's cross-country program to travel to Huntsville, Alabama in December. The second and third action items are out-of-state field trips for North Oconee High School's girls' and boys' soccer programs to travel to Foley, Alabama in March. And the fourth action item is an out-of-state field trip for North Oconee High School's baseball program to travel to Jacksonville, Florida in April. The superintendent's recommendation is to approve the field trips as presented, and this concludes Student Services' report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Yancey. Special education, Ms. Corngold.
Good evening, Dr. Harden and Board members. For this evening's report, special education has three information items and no action items. Our first item of information is about our preschool math screenings. Preschool Special Needs Program is a federal amendment to the IDEA, and it mandates that a range of educational opportunities be provided for preschool students with disabilities ages three through five. Any student or child ages three through five who is experiencing significant difficulties or delays in cognitive, communication, motor, social, emotional, or adaptive motor can be referred for services. To support our young students in Oconee County, we offer these free monthly screenings for children ages three through five to determine what their early intervention needs or supports or therapies would be needed. We strongly believe in early intervention and early support for our students. These services are provided within our local community as well as any students that are transitioning from Babies Can't Wait, which is part C of IDEA, and that's the early intervention from birth to three. So any students that may be transitioning from Babies Can't Wait can also move into the screening process for us. We advertise these screenings through our local website, through the local newspaper, to also to childcare providers and centers within our community. Children are screened on hearing, vision, articulation, and developmental skills. We have parents, preschool teachers, pediatricians, and other professionals that can refer students to our screening. The team consists of, we have special education teachers, speech pathologists, and audiologists also on staff that will help with the assessment process. Following the screening, students then are assessed on their scorecard whether or not they need to be referred for a further evaluation. If the children are referred for a comprehensive eval, then they go to an eligibility meeting to determine if they meet state criteria for special education in Oconee County Schools. The second item of information is our community-based vocational training program that we have here in Oconee County. Both high schools participate in the community-based vocational program. We also work within our own schools here in Oconee County, Oconee Elementary, Malcolm Bridge Elementary, or a few of the schools that our students go to. But we also go to Publix, Joe's, Joe and Sam's, we work with the Oconee County Resource Council, Your Pi, or just a few of the places that our students go to work. They work with the custodial staff, the cafeteria, they even work in classrooms within our school here, especially with the adaptive classes, and they work with reading or helping students transition from class to class. They learn a lot of office skills as well when working in our schools. When they go to Publix, they learn various jobs associated with grocery and retail. They work with stocking shelves, working with skewing, you know, the SKU numbers, matching those up, locating them for the shelves. They also do some bagging, stocking shelves, and they get practice work, you know, talking with customers and employees. Joe's and Sam's is a restaurant, and so they get to kind of get the understanding of what it takes to run a restaurant. They clear tables, white tables, stock shelves, they label the bags for Joe and Sam's, and Joe and Sam's actually has a certain dress code, which does help our students prepare for employment after. The Oconee County Resource Council is another area that we go to work. We do the Food for Kids program, our students, and they bag probably 180 bags of food a week, and they work kind of like as a team and in a production line, so they learn a lot of great skills there as well. The last item of information is our grad rate to follow up on teaching and learning because our students are a part of the grad rate for that as well. Here's the grad rate over the past several years. Last year, we were 100%. We were very pleased with that, and this year, we were very, very close with the 98.5. So as you can see, our ranking, we were number one in the state of Georgia for graduates over 250. We were number four overall. The other three ahead of us had smaller cohorts of graduates that ranked 1, 2, 3. We were number one in our LEA, and we have consistently outperformed the state with over 20% consistently. So we are really pleased about that. We know that the tapestry of K through 12 for children's education is going from elementary to high school, but when we get to high school, our, our high expectations that we keep for elementary and middle remain, but our administrators and our special education teachers have to kind of personalize that, you know, instruction more so because the students have to earn credit, and they have to be able to earn those credits in order to graduate. So along with the strong co-teaching models and the resources that we put into high school and the morning tutoring that the high school teachers provide, the Titan Time, the Warrior Period, assistive technology, credit recovery, CTAE courses, we work very closely with GVRA and High School High Tech. The clubs and extracurricular activities really culminate all of this that helps our students get across the stage. So a huge thanks to the amount of people that go into helping our special needs students at all levels, but be able to maintain this level of a graduation rate. So if any questions, that's it for special education.
Any questions? Go ahead, Bart.
Big Day next Tuesday? Are we redoing Big Day next Tuesday?
Yes, yes, next Tuesday, the 14th. Thank you.
Next, we have technology. Mr. McCullers.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Harden. Oconee County Schools Technology Services Report for October 6th includes no informational items and two action items for the October 20th regular session. Our first action item is board policy JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students. My first action item involves revisions to board policy JCDAF, which was developed in response to House Bill 340, the Distraction-Free Education Act 2025. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that Oconee County Schools continues its commitment to fostering a focused and distraction-free learning environment for students. We believe that the academic achievement and student well-being are best supported in classrooms where personal electronic devices do not interfere with instruction, social interaction, or student engagement. The goal is to minimize distractions, improve academic outcomes, increase meaningful interactions, and focus learning experiences. Superintendent recommends placing the proposed board policy JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students, on the table for public review and comment at the October 20th board meeting. Second action item tonight for the next board meeting is the interactive panels pilot. Last school year, we conducted a device pilot at the elementary level where we demoed several different brands and models of interactive panels. The goal at that time was to determine which panel best aligns with our instructional model and needs. After gathering teacher and technology feedback, we have decided to move forward with the new line Q Pro panels for the second stage of our pilot, the instructional pilot. The focus of this portion of the pilot will be on instructional and innovative uses of the panels in the classroom. Howar Technology Solutions submitted the lowest bid for new line Q Pro series interactive panels for the instructional pilot project. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve Howar Technology Solutions with a bid of $44,144 for 20 interactive panels. This project will be paid for using ESPLAST dollars. That concludes the Technology Services Report unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCullers.
Thank you.
Operations, Dr. White.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Harden. Operations has four items of information for this evening and five action items for this month's regular session. The first informational item for Operations is an update on our energy report. Our kilowatt usage per day for 1,000 square feet has been updated for the month of August. The second informational item is our transportation update. For the previous month, we had 20 athletic field trips, excuse me, 20 field trips, 111 athletic trips, 28 special education trips, 216 buses deployed for a total of 11,431 miles. Our third item of information is update on school nutrition participation for the month of September. Board members, you'll see that we saw a decrease in participation of breakfast of .49% and lunch participation of .28% as compared to September of 2024. Our fourth item of information is update on ESPLAST 7, Presentations and Feedback. Staff has conducted more than 27 presentations on proposed ESPLAST 7 projects, school councils, school staff meetings, school leadership meetings, transportation, community organizations, and superintendent advisory groups, which include students, parents, staff, and business leaders. We're grateful for their time, support, and feedback on the proposed projects to maintain our infrastructure to continue student success. North Oconee High School is very excited about their proposed renovation and co-curricular projects. We did have feedback from students, parents, staff, coaches, and administrators that I wanted to update you on. Our original proposal included turfing the soccer field, adding lights to the back practice field, creating a dedicated wrestling room, and expanding athletic storage. However, they identified the need for an auxiliary gym as a higher priority. This need stems from multiple PE classes occurring simultaneously in a single space, along with up to 18 fall and winter sports teams overlapping and sharing the current indoor practice facilities. Oconee County High School is also excited about finally having a blue roof on a blue school to proudly reflect their school colors, adding changing rooms and extending the back practice field to a full-length field with lights, which will allow for multiple team practices on campus simultaneously. Instead of adding a fourth field, the preference is to turf the field near the student parking where we can put in, where we put in competition lights this last summer. This proposal will provide valuable flexibility, enabling practices to continue even after multiple days of rain and grow their athletic capacity. Operations has five action items for the October 20th regular session. Our first action item is the replacement of six school buses, which includes three 77-passenger buses and three sped buses as part of our replacement cycle. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of these buses from Rush Truck Centers for a proposal cost of $937,800 at the October 20th, 2025 regular board session. This project will be paid for using ESPLAST and general fund dollars. Operations' second action item for this month's regular session is our vehicle surplus list. You'll see that we have six buses and seven white fleet vehicles that need to be surplus based on our replacement cycle and cost of repairs. We have several buses noted where engine replacement is required, which is cost-prohibited based on the current price of a bus. Our third action item is a new radio system for transportation. We currently have analog radios and a private radio system on each bus. Feedback from drivers, transportation staff, school front offices, and principals is that the current communication systems are not user-friendly and not meeting our communication needs. This new system would replace the existing system with a newer digital system, which does not rely on cell service and continues private channels for communication. This project would include new base stations in each school and a new antenna on our current radio tower. We already have an agreement with Alpha Communications and have compatible radios in our fleet, thus allowing native integration with existing devices. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a new radio system from Alpha Communications for a proposal cost of $61,290 at the October 20th, 2025 regular board session. This project will be paid for using ESPLAST and general fund dollars. Our fourth action item is a new camera system for school buses. We currently have three brands of cameras on our buses that take four different hard drives. Drivers must physically come to transportation. Drivers must physically come to transportation for transportation staff to download the video, analyze, and then share as appropriate. This new camera system would be cellular, integrate with our existing onboard cameras, and expedite video requests. In addition to operational efficiencies, this project will also increase safety in our buses by allowing for real-time monitoring and enhance incident response. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a cellular camera system from Rush Truck Centers for a proposal cost of a hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents at the October twentieth, 2025, regular Board Session. This project will be paid for using ESPLAS and general fund dollars. Our final action item is for the repair of the visitor bleachers in North Oconee in their main gym. The bleachers are original to the school, and each bleacher set contains four banks of bleachers. One bank of bleachers is not operating correctly, which means that bleachers are only able to be fully extended or retract. They are unable to be in any other position where the bank of bleachers binds the remaining three. If the bleachers are not pushed on all the way, North Oconee loses access to two basketball goals in the gym. Without repair, the bleachers could become static and unmovable if repairs delayed. This affects the efficiency and use of that space for instruction and athletics, which occurs multiple times a day. To resolve this, the bleacher blank must be disassembled, repaired, and then reassembled. This repair will be done in coordination with the school and athletic schedules because we are expecting up to fourteen weeks on parts due to retooling of machinery for custom parts, then up to a week of downtime. The superintendent's recommendation for the Board of Education to approve these repairs from HE Hodge for a proposal cost of forty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars at the October twentieth, 2025, regular Board Session. This project will be paid for using ESPLAS and general fund dollars. This concludes the Operations Report unless there are any questions.
Sir.
Thank you, I have a few. One, I want to say thank you. I know in our meetings, when you're going through these budget items or these potential items, we always highlight how it will be paid for and do want to draw attention to what you were saying. Also, it is coming from our ESPLAS, or at least a portion of it will, so thank you for highlighting that. Looking at one other piece on the bleacher repair, I've heard from numerous people about that over the last few weeks, so I'm very pleased to hear that is getting attention.
Yes, sir.
But looking at the transportation cellular camera system, for those, for that camera system, are those existing cameras both surveilling the interior of our buses and the exterior, or is it just one or the other?
So we currently have them inside of the bus right now. It does give us eyes outside of the bus in certain areas.
Okay. And then, as we migrate to a cellular system and other different bands of cellular systems out there, are we going to have sufficient coverage on each of our bus routes for that cellular system to upload, or is it managed differently?
Whether they're here in Oconee County or in another county or somewhere else in the southeast, if they hit a dead zone anywhere as far as cell coverage, it actually stores it on the hard drive, and then when it hits cell service, it uploads to the cloud from there.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. White.
Yes, sir.
Facilities, Mr. Ricketson.
Good evening. The Oconee County Schools Operations and Facilities, October fifth, 2025, Board of Education Report contains two items of information and two action items for the October twentieth, 2025, Board of Education Meeting. First item of information is the Lead Custodian Meeting. The September Lead Custodian Meeting was held on Thursday, September eleventh, and was hosted by the team at Rocky Branch Elementary School. The team discussed disease prevention and storm preparedness. Our custodial teams are to be commended for their rigorous work ensuring that our schools are clean for health. I pushed the wrong button. Second item of information is the construction update. First is district-wide generators. All of the generators are installed and operational. We're currently installing a monitoring system so that we can, so that we will be notified remotely if there's any issues with the generators. Second is transportation offices. Design work continues for the new transportation offices as we prepare to get everything ready to go to bid. Our first action item is Capital Outlet Project application. The Capital Outlet Project application is a request for state funding for future projects. Board Members, I'd like to remind you of a few things related to the application. We are required to make the application well in advance of actually doing the work. Also, the Board is also allowed to pass a resolution to amend the application in the future if necessary. The amounts shown on this slide are simply the amounts that are eligible from the state, provided that we spend the required local funds amount. And lastly, the amount provided by the state is based on their formula for a specific item. That amount usually falls within twenty to forty percent of the total project cost. We won't know the total project cost until the design is completed in the future. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve the FY27 Capital Outlet Application, Project Application in the October Board Meeting. You'll see here a slide of the North Oconee Stormwater Pipe Project. If you look in green, that is the area that we repaired last month that was related to the sinkhole. We replaced three hundred linear feet of storm pipe that related to that sinkhole. So basically, with the piping that had to be replaced, we had to go back three hundred feet before we found sound pipe to attach to. What we found through this process, though, is we videoed the interior of all the storm pipes at North Oconee, and we discovered that the area shown in yellow, which is five hundred and twenty linear feet going from the manhole we were working at all the way to the tension pond, is completely deteriorated. So we need to replace that piping as well. Through this process, we also identified numerous other issues within the storm piping, but these issues aren't critical at this time and will likely be addressed in future, in the future proposed renovation at North Oconee. We solicited proposals from three contractors to replace the five hundred and twenty feet of pipe. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve Smith and Company for the proposal cost of a one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, and Breedlove Land Printing for a proposal cost of thirty-five hundred dollars at the October twentieth, 2025, Board Meeting. This project will be paid for using ESPLAS and general fund dollars. And that concludes the Facilities Report unless there are any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ricketson. Human Resources, Mr. Coever.
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Harden. Human Resources' report this evening contains two items of information and no action items. Our first item of information is an update on our transition to the YOS platform. The first phase of that transition, moving our substitute management operation to YOS, is complete. At this time, all substitute management is being completed through the YOS platform. As with any major system transition, there have been a few challenges and adjustments along the way. Change is never easy, but our team has been proactive in addressing the concerns and needs of our staff. To support substitutes through this change, we are offering multiple in-person training sessions here at the ISC, the first of which was earlier today. In addition, we have shared detailed step-by-step PDF guides and instructional videos with both staff and substitutes to walk them through the system and how to use it. These resources are available anytime for review, and our team continues to provide one-on-one support as needed. We are also actively listening to the feedback that we've received from our substitutes and staff and are working closely with YOS to implement several of those suggestions in real time. We intentionally tackled the most challenging and interactive area first, substitute management. Moving forward, the remaining phases of this transition, bringing our hiring platform, personnel documents, and HR processes into YOS, will not be as substantially noticeable throughout the district. These changes will largely improve backend efficiency and streamline operations for staff while minimizing disruption at the school level. While we will continue to work through the natural kinks of a new system, we are already seeing the benefits of a more unified platform, and remain confident that the move to YOS will serve our staff and schools well in the long term. Our second item of information is an update on our MARK III transition. All benefit selections for the upcoming year have been finalized in partnership with MARK III. This process has allowed us to expand and enhance offerings for staff. To ensure employees are well-informed ahead of open enrollment, a representative from MARK III is visiting every location in the district to host informational staff meetings. These sessions will highlight new benefits, enhancements to the current offerings, and provide staff with the opportunity to ask questions directly of the experts at MARK III. In addition to the staff meetings, MARK III representatives will also be on-site at each location during the open enrollment period. They will be available for one-on-one meetings with each and every staff member in our school district. Our goal is a hundred percent of staff to sit down one-on-one. This transition has been intentionally designed to prioritize education, transparency, and accessibility for our staff. By engaging employees directly at their schools and departments, we are ensuring every staff member feels supported and confident as they make these important benefit decisions for themselves and their families. This concludes the Human Resources' report this evening, but we remain available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coever.
Yes, sir.
Communications, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Harden. Communications' report this evening contains two items of information. The first is September social media information. Oconee County Schools had thirty-eight social media posts in September with an average of twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty-one views. For the month, twenty-seven posts were viewed more than ten thousand times, including three at seventy thousand, two at forty thousand, two at thirty thousand, and five at twenty thousand. The top post for the month was the announcement of the National Merit Scholarship Program, sixteen committed students. Combined with the eleven national semifinalists we announced earlier, those two posts combined for one hundred and twenty-two thousand views. The top ten posts for the month had a great deal of variety, including the National Merit Scholars, along with Teachers of the Year, the September eleventh commemoration, the opening of a roundabout impacting North Oconee and Rocky Branch, behind-the-scenes with Dove Creek Middle, and of course, the announcement of Dr. Melissa Butler as our new superintendent. Oconee County Schools gained one hundred and nine followers in September, giving the district twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and three followers on social media, including more than twelve thousand for the first time ever on Facebook. In addition, the OCS newsletter was opened ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-six times at a rate of seventy-one percent. The industry average for education is thirty-five percent. We are so appreciative of the parents, students, community members, businesses, and media outlets that follow and engage with OCS on social media accounts. The second item of information is the September Highlights Video.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. We do have a need to discuss personnel and need a motion to enter executive session.
I'll make a motion that the Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Ms. Parrish.
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Pass is five zero. We are adjourned to executive session.